So, I think that we're taking that for the half of the places where we're all. And so, we're trying to get that in, so we're going to have to, you know, we 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 have to, you know,
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the November 2nd, 2020 Alpharetta City Council meeting. Appreciate you all joining us here. It is 6:30, so we'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. Note for the record that all members of council are present and accounted for except for Mayor Pro Tem Donald Mitchell. He's a little under the weather today. If you will, please stand if you can and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance to begin the meeting.
(Inaudible) allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item up on tonight's agenda is the consent agenda, and the consent agenda consists of three items. Those would be the council meeting minutes for the meeting of October 26th, 2020, the financial management report for the month ending September 30th, 2020, and the alcoholic beverage license applications. There were four of the alcoholic beverage license applications, and that is PH-20-AB-12 Camley LLC DBA Ponco Chicken, 220 South Main Street, Suite J, Alpharetta, Georgia, 30201, PH-20-AB-13 Thai Ricksaw Restaurant Group LLC DBA Ricksaw Thai Street Food, 1495 Alpharetta Highway, Alpharetta, Georgia, 30009, PH-20-AB-14 Jackal Brewing LLC, 2855 Marconi Drive, Suite 350, Alpharetta, Georgia, 30005, and the fourth is PH-20-AB-15 Gusto Avalon LLC DBA Gusto, 4195 Avalon Boulevard, Alpharetta, Georgia, 30009. Is there anyone who would like to remove anything from the consent agenda this evening? Councilman Binder?
Sir, I would like to pull the financial management report for month ending September 30th.
So we'll remove the financial management report for the month ending September 30th, 2020, from the consent agenda, and if there's no other items that would like to be removed from the consent agenda, I'll call for a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Burnett, a second by Councilman Merkel, to approve the consent agenda with the items council meeting minutes for October 26th, 2020, and the alcoholic beverage license applications. All those in favor of the motion, please vote yes, otherwise vote no. Councilwoman Richard? And it does pass unanimously. That being said, we'll take up the item of the financial management report, month ending September 30th, 2020. Director Harris, if you don't mind.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. September, a little bit of difference between that and August as far as some of our numbers. We did adjust the local option sales tax a little bit more favorably than we even showed last month. I think we showed as a positive of about $1 million in local option sales tax, given that the collections for August and July and August were running at about 90%. I did, however, just today get the numbers for September's sales, but we get the check in, in October late. We got it Friday, and that was running more like 80%. So it's been good, really good up to this point, and it's still above budget at 80, but it's a little bit less than what I was thinking when I said we'll easily get this million. But we'll definitely be on the positive side of local option sales tax unless we hit some headwinds on going into the new year. We did also then increase the negative impact related to the hotel motel. I think we may have shown it at 450 or 500. That looks like it's going to be about $650,000 to the negative as far as those taxes, because again, we're still operating at about low 40% revenues in hotels currently in Alpharetta, pre-COVID to COVID. And that's it as far as those adjustments for one month to the next month. Anything else?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thanks for being here tonight, Director Harris. Do you feel that with what was, we, this council had approved, that we are in line to have a balanced budget come June 30th, knowing that there are some unknowns? Do you feel comfortable with that statement?
We will have a balanced budget. The question will be, is, would there be any weaknesses with that budget? You know, is there, is there something we're not back to full schedule on with that budget? We do expect that property taxes, we could see a sizable negative to that number going into next year. So we have to get that in. We got to get the quint in, and we got to get DEA in. So we do have a work still cut out, I think, to get a balanced budget, and then how far do we go to try to get back to the days of putting $4 million to $5 million in recurring capital? That's going to be the challenge. Hopefully that answers it.
Any other questions from council? Director Harris, I just have one question. I noticed as I was looking through the numbers that the collections of the business licenses were below projections. Do you have any idea?
Yeah, we don't build that until about December 15th, and we collect in February. So we won't have any real collections this year, other than lagging from last year businesses, like business licenses. So that bill-
And I think that's the number that surprised me was the, based on up to this point, last year's budget. I think we were well below-
Well, that's on, that's on page seven of the report, I think, and let me see. We've collected 4.1% last year. We were at 5.4, but it was 61,000 to 37,000. It's just a myriad of things during the summer, I think. And it, you know, we did budget a lower number going into this year than we had budgeted last year with the concept that we just don't know if the number of employees have dropped.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions from council? Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
If there are no other questions about this item, I'll call for a motion.
Yes, sir. I move to approve the financial management report for the month ending September 30th, 2020.
Have a motion by Councilman Binder, a second by Councilwoman Richard. Any discussion? All those in favor of accepting the financial management report and approving month ending September, September 30th, 2020, please vote yes, otherwise vote no, and it does pass unanimously. So that'll wrap up the consent agenda for this evening, and we'll move on to the public hearing. As you will note on the agenda, the first item that was identified for this was MP-20-03/CU-20-06, C3 North Atlanta Church, 5815 Wimbledon Parkway. This item has been deferred by staff until the planning commission meeting on Thursday, December 3rd, 2020, and will neither be heard nor considered at this meeting. So the second item on the public hearing agenda for this evening is item B, and that's PH-20-12 Farmhouse Settlement Historic Designation. This is the first reading. So Ms. Cook, I'll ask you to come, please, present, and Mr. Thomas, please stand by at the ready.
The property is before you on the screen. The Community Development Department and the Recreation Parks and Cultural Services Department is requesting that the Farmhouse Settlement property be added to Appendix B Historic Resource Inventory and designated as historic. The property is located on, at Zero Morris Road, legally described as being located in the northeast corner of Georgia 400 and Old Milton Parkway, and the request, if approved, will allow the city to designate the property as historic per our preservation ordinance. And it was actually in 2012 that we had a zoning condition which required the applicant to dedicate the property that's shown here on the screen because of the, the history of the property. And then we also have, I'll put a, kind of a blow-up of the park that's concept planned. So the property is shown here at this corner, and of course, there's a future plan for an office development that would be located beside of that property. When they were rezoned in 2012, they were required to dedicate that property to the city, which actually happened October of last year, so we have acquired that property. According to the research by the Alpharetta and Old Milton Historical Society, the settlement at Farmhouse predates the founding of Old Milton County and the city of Alpharetta by at least 30 years. Early settlers, settlers were living in Indian Territory. Big Creek Baptist Church was chartered there in 1828, which is 10 years before the Trail of Tears when the Cherokee Indians were removed from the area. In the early 1830s, there was an operating water mill on Martin Creek, and you can still see some remnants of that, of course, where the rocks were gathered to create that mill. The Farmhouse Community was also located near an important trade route that ran from Lebanon Community near Roswell into Forsyth County, and Farmhouse Community was a thriving commercial center between 1834 to 1858, and at various times, a grist mill, sawmill, cotton gin, post office and general store were in operation there. And then, of course, several of the city of Alpharetta's founding families are associated with this property. And we did put together a concept plan, of course, that's not funded yet, but designating this on our historic list will enable the Parks and Recreation Department to seek grants to fund any kind of construction for this area. We did look at the Unified Development Code, Section 2.94B, the criteria. We found that it did meet the criteria. We also took this to the Historic Preservation Commission on October 21st. Staff recommended approval at that meeting. There were no public comments, and after discussion, the commission recommended approval five unanimously to council. And if you have any questions, I'll be glad to try to answer those at this time.
Do we have any questions from council at this time? Councilman Burnett?
Ms. Cook, thank you. Do you, is there anything strategic about, I know that doing some of the historic designations around town have caused some controversy with future development. Are there a series of guidelines that will be put on this property should somebody actually want to build said office development, and how would it be strategically used by the city? Thank you.
We have already, we had previously reviewed plans for an office building that was located adjacent to this property, and it was from the owner that dedicated this parcel to us. And they had a condition providing, had to provide access to that park. So the construction that goes forward, they would have to make sure that we still have access.
Any other questions from council? Councilman Binder?
You mentioned that there's a, currently no plan, or that conceptual drawing, but currently unfunded.
Yes.
Is there a plan or a plan starting to be put in place for funding?
I do not have a plan, and I don't know if that has moved forward with the Parks or the Rec Commission with their recommendations, but all I have is the concept pa, the plan right now. So not to my knowledge has any funding moved forward for this.
Is there going to begin maybe discussing what, how to move forward with this, or after we approve this tonight, what's the next step, I guess? Let's, let's go with that.
I think the next step would be for me to discuss with the Parks Department, so they can move forward with taking it to their commission also, to talk about what's happened here, and that this property's been given to the city, and I think that's probably the next step, unless there's another direction you want us to-
I think, I think it's good, the, the, putting together the conceptual plans and moving them more, more towards what they need to make it more reality, but then on the other hand, too, is how, how it can be funded, so.
Yeah, and I, and I think, you know, there, there's a lot of different opportunities that, that we found when we were doing some research for incentives for historic properties. There's grant opportunities, there's other opportunities that they will, this will open up for them to pursue if it's on our list.
I think another easier question, too. How, can this tie into the loop in the Greenway or be a, I know we've discussed it, and I've seen maps somewhat on that before in discussion with previous administration, but-
Absolutely. This, I mean, this is, it's light here. You can't really see that, but we've already spoken to the property that's at Webb Bridge where Faze Learning is located. That's just north of this property. They also have the desire for there to be a future connection that would connect from Old Milton over to Webb Bridge.
Yeah.
So that'd be a great connection.
That might be a good connection to get him from Webb Bridge down there scenic route, but then maybe, I don't know what, what's available to get across 400, so that they're not crossing major, either Webb Bridge or Old Milton to get to Avalon, so.
Absolutely.
But it'd be good. I'd, I'd like to see some movement on how we can get this plan to reality.
And this plan, too, you know, with the consideration of 400, it showed parking that would be located just south of Webb Bridge, and that would have the access that would take you over there.
Okay. Thank you, Kathy.
Any other questions from council at this time? Thank you, Ms. Cook. Mr. Thomas?
Yes, sir. An ordinance to amend Section 2.9 Historic Preservation Incentive Zoning of the Unified Development Code of the City of Alpharetta, Georgia, to add Zero Morris Road to Appendix B Historic Resource Inventory Designated Historic Buildings to repeal conflicting ordinances for other purposes.
Thanks, sir. Since this is the first reading, we'll take public comments on this item. Ms. Cobb, do we have any public comment cards?
We do not, sir.
But if anybody here would like to come forward and speak on the Farmhouse Settlement Historic Designation, now is your chance to do so. Seeing no one come forward, we'll close public comment. Do I have a motion from council?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, I would offer a motion to approve PH-20-12 Farmhouse Settlement Historic Designation, as read by Sam Thomas this evening.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Merkel, and a second by Councilwoman Richard. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of the motion to approve Farmhouse Settlement Historic Designation, PH-20-12, please vote yes, otherwise vote no, and it does pass unanimously. So that'll wrap up the public hearing for this evening. Next portion of tonight's agenda is the old business portion of the meeting, and first item was V-20-11 Sitco/174 North Main Street Variance. That item was tabled last meeting, and will be on the table until it is removed from the table by council. Is there any interest in doing so?
Mr. Mayor, I would make a motion to remove V-20-11 Sitco/174 North Main Street Variance from the table.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Burnett, a second by Councilwoman Richard, to remove V-20-11 Sitco/174 North Main Street Variance from the table. At the time it was tabled, there was a motion with a second to deny the application. So we'll pick back up at that. My apologies. Got a little ahead of ourselves here. All those in favor of removing the item from the table, please vote yes, otherwise vote accordingly. And it does pass unanimously, so we will remove that item from the table. And now I'll remind everyone that at the time it was tabled, there was a motion with a second to deny the application. There was a motion by Councilwoman Richard, and I believe the second was by Councilman Binder at the time. We'll pick back up at that point. Is there any discussion? So seeing none. All those who are in favor of denying the application, V-20-11 Sitco/174 North Main Street Variance, please vote yes to deny, otherwise vote no. And it does pass unanimously, six zero to deny that item. Second item under old business is consideration of an ordinance to amend Chapter 30 of the city code. This is loitering. This is the second reading, so there'll be no public comment. Director Robinson, you have the floor.
Good evening. No changes from the presentation last, last Monday night, so I'd be happy to answer any questions or concerns.
Any questions from council at this time? Thanks, sir. Mr. Thomas, would you mind doing the reading?
An ordinance of the mayor and council of the city of Alpharetta, Georgia, to amend Chapter 30 offenses and miscellaneous provisions of the code of the city of Alpharetta, Georgia, to add in Article 4 loitering for the purpose of engaging in the solicitation of sex acts to provide for an effective date and for other purposes.
Thanks, sir. And this is the second reading, so there's no public comment on this item. Any discussion amongst council? I'll call for a motion.
Mr. Mayor, excuse me. I'd like to offer a motion to approve the second reading of the ordinance to amend Chapter 30 of the city code, loitering, as read by Sam Thomas.
We have a motion by Councilman Burnett and a second by Councilman Binder, and that is to approve consideration of an ordinance to amend Chapter 30 of the city code, loitering, as read by city attorney Sam Thomas. Any discussion? All those in favor of approving the motion, please vote yes, otherwise vote no, and it does pass unanimously. That'll wrap up the old business portion of tonight's meeting, and we'll move on to new business. And the new business item for this evening is design services for Webb Bridge Road east of North Point Parkway to the Greenway. Director Sasevich, you have the floor.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor and Council. We're here tonight is the Webb Bridge Road Corridor project, and we're going, referring to it east of North Point Parkway due to we do not have the recommendations from the consultant regarding trade winds, so we don't want to include the actual North Point Parkway intersection of Webb Bridge Road. Total cost to do the project is $583,508 for Pond and Company and an additional $109,000 Atkins for project management. The project is primarily a bridge design over Big Creek, and one component of this to mitigate funding and decrease costs as much as possible, we're going to take the bike lanes from the road and put them onto the 10-foot wide multi-use trail over the bridge instead of widening the bridge additional eight feet. That stays out of additional flood plain, additional wetlands, as well as lower the cost. Additionally, the design is going to be south of the existing bridge, so we can keep Webb Bridge open at all times during construction. And lastly, we're going to maintain the streetscape of the East Gate subdivision. So we're basically going to work within the gutter line over there and not remove any of their trees or any of their existing landscape or any of their sidewalk. And we're looking at about 12 to 18 months, depending on the permitting requirements that we need to do for this project.
Thank you, Pete. Just because I did not jot it down, what was that total number?
So the design cost is $583,508, and then Atkins is going to do the project manager for us, is an additional $109,000 even.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from council? Thanks, sir. Ms. Cobb, do we have any public comment cards on this item?
We do not, sir.
But if anybody would like to speak on the design services for Webb Bridge Road east of North Point Parkway to the Greenway, now is your chance to come forward and speak. Seeing no one, we will close public comment. Do I have a motion from council?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to approve Pond and Company's proposal of $583,508 for design and improvements of Webb Bridge Road from east to North Point Parkway to Big, the Big Creek-Greenway culvert, and an approval of Atkins' proposal of $109,000 for project management services for the Webb Bridge Road improvements, and authorize the mayor to execute all necessary documents.
I have a motion by Councilman Burnett and a second by Councilman Merkel, and that was to approve the design services for Webb Bridge Road east of North Point Parkway to the Greenway in an amount not to exceed $583,508 and up to $109,000 for project management by Atkins. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none. I'll call for a mo, on the motion to approve up to $583,508 and project management up to $109,000 for Atkins. If that is the case, vote yes, otherwise vote no. Councilman Hypes?
That is approved unanimously.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Thank you, Pete. Appreciate you getting that moving. So that'll wrap up the new business portion of tonight's meeting, and next will be our workshop. Workshop item consists of one item, and that is the occupational tax structure and rates. Director Harris, you once again have the floor.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. James is handing out the presentation as well. We have it up here briefly. Obviously, the goal was tonight just to go over what our occupational tax structure is and what law, how it's created, and the methods that you can apply for levying the tax, and how we compare with other cities, just, just to give everybody a little update. The first slide on page two, it's a tax. It's not a regulatory fee, so it's, it's taxes to generate revenues. It's not trying to associate the benefit with the cost as a fee would be. So it is a tax. It's in slide three, it's an imposed occupational tax on businesses that want or more locations inside your city. Next is in-state is just a little bit more of what is not a location or an office, a temporary worksite is not, et cetera, vehicle for sales or delivery by a business that has a separate office is not. Food trucks are, that is an actual business in a vehicle, so. But that's all that slide was trying to say. Slide five, out of, you can apply the tax to out-of-state businesses as well, as, as long as they have one or more employees or agents who exert substantial effort inside your city, and they do have some business income generating property, and then the limitation is that only one local government in the state can do that. And also, if they're able to demonstrate that they're paying on those same revenues or people, they're paying a tax to another state related to those revenues, then you could not apply it. Anyway, then next is taxation of insurance companies. They have their own two, two sort of multi-tax system. One is this, in this law, it's $100. Well, it's, it's really based on population municipality. Right now, we're at $100 per insurance company. Based on our size, I think in 2016, somewhere 15 or 16, we had a retreat or somewhere. We were looking forward to trying to raise it to 150, because we can legally, we can move it to 150 right now under the law, because it's, we're over 50,000 population of a municipality, but we're still at 100. So there's 537 insurance companies in our city that pay the $100. Additionally, there's an insurance premium tax that has a separate revenue, and that is a gross, like basically a gross receipts tax that they pay on the premiums they have or generate in- they have or generate inside our city. So, I think life insurance companies may be at 1%, and then it goes up to 2.5% for all the other lines of coverage of their gross receipts on those premiums that they have. So, that is about a $4.3 million revenue we get from insurance companies as a separate line item. But in this context, we're talking about it under the occupational tax, and it's only $100 per. State law can't go, we could go to 150 and raise that $50 and get another $26,850. So, that's that. The next one is financial institutions tax. There's actually, in this regard too, there's almost like another separate gross receipts tax for them, and they pay 0.25% of their gross receipts. We collect about $470,000 as a financial institution tax. So, in our revenues and our budget, that's a separate line item, separate from the occupational tax. The next slide just gets into, there's four methods of how you, that how you can establish the tax, and number of employees, profitability ratio, gross receipts, or flat fee, or a combination thereof. So, on Slide nine, we talk, obviously, number of employees. It's a full-time equivalent employee. And we all know what an employee is, for the most part, if you're paying FICA and they're under the control of the business, then they're an employee. And so, that is the method of number of employees. Profitability ratio is usually, they call it a method, but it's almost always tied to the gross receipts. It's the method by which you try to determine which businesses by categorization are profitable businesses or more profitable than others, as determined by their net income over their gross receipts. So, you can have like-kind categories to establish a tax rate for those lower profitability companies would probably have a lower tax rate. You may end up paying more in taxes, because they ultimately have a lot of gross receipts. But this profitability ratio is about using a national standard like the IRS, or really, people use the North American Industry Classification System. It says, for that business, you are generally in this category of earning 10% of your bottom, you know, of your gross receipts makes its way down to net income. And so, you combine all those companies that are in that same area, and generally, like most cities, would have seven or eight. Most cities that use the gross receipts method, which we do not, have seven or eight of these categories by ranges for the profitability of companies, and then they apply a tax rate to the gross receipts of those companies. And so, it's very, a little bit complicated, but you got to establish the profitability ratio. Next is the gross receipts, and that's sort of tied in. Then it's just a method of, what is a gross receipts? Total income. And then the total income, you'd apply the rate, however your city wants to establish that rate, to apply to the gross receipts. Like I said, most use a profitability ratio to come up with where the companies are, and then establish maybe seven or eight rates for the groupings, seven or eight groupings of profitable businesses, from the very high to the low in those seven categories. Then they have a middle, like a rate per thousand of gross receipts to apply. And then there's a flat fee that you could do to, per business. There's something that's just called the 400 Club. Under the law, there's these professional, and various areas in Georgia law about professional businesses, and these are them. They're called the 400 Club. You can either have a, the business is able to either pay on your, let's say, your number of employees base, or they can pay a $400 per practitioner base. It's their choice. And generally, it's the 400, but. So, they're just called the 400 Club, because they'll pay $400 per practitioner. So, jumping to what we do, and what we've been doing for some time, is, well, first, I start off that we send, as I mentioned earlier, the bills go out December 1st, or probably the latest, December 15th. They're due February 15th. Ours is a per-employee-based concept, and it's a base fee that if you're between one and four employees, you pay $100. Now, it's not per employee. That's $100 for, if you have one to four, on up. And until you reach over 50, 50 and above, then you'll pay $7 per employee. And then over to the side, you'll see what I said about insurance companies are currently at 100. Home-based businesses under our ordinances is at $90. The 400 is $400, or the number of employees. The max total we have is $10,000. We have five businesses that exceed that max. Not by much, probably about $11,000 or $12,000 we would collect by removing that max with this structure. And then you see there are historical revenues, about $1,165,21 is a, you know, is a guess. And next year's a guess, with COVID really is down, but we, you know, we just won't know what that is until we get into February and get these, you know, bills out in December and get into February. So, that's ours. What I attached in your agenda packet is the actual—
Councilman Binder?
Just a point of clarification. The, you said the max, right now, the cap? There'll only be, you know, four or five, and they're close to maybe 11,000. So, it'd be a gain of $1,000 to us, 1,000 to 2,000?
The gain would be 11,000 if I removed that on all five of those companies. That's how close they are. Not, they're not that much greater than the max.
Thank you.
They are greater, but not by that much. Sorry about that. Under, the next slide, I just did a slide on the survey highlights, because in your packet, we just put the surrounding cities, 11 other surrounding cities, including us. Brookhaven, Coming, Dunwoody, Forsyth County, John's Creek, Milton, Peachtree Corners, Roswell, Sandy Springs, and Woodstock. And it's, you know, it has the methods in the left, the four different methods, and you see check marks on what they are. Of course, we just have number of employees, and then we show everybody else's, and then we will say what the fee composition is, some of the dollar amounts, et cetera, and then their revenue history, and then the percent of that revenue to their general fund budget, which can be sometimes misleading, hard to get from their general fund budget, because we all sometimes include different things in our general fund. But that gives you an idea of that revenue source and how important it is to their revenue structure. So, anyways, these are what I have down as some of the just highlights. Obviously, we're one of the lowest as the revenue source to the operating budget of 1%. You know, I'd be remiss if I didn't mention, we do have a homestead exemptions that we have at $45,000. We're, Sandy Springs probably has had a floating all along, because they, when they got created, I think they put a floating homestead in. The other cities don't as much, and that saves us, our residents, about $2.5 million. So, you could argue that that's sort of a shift over there that could be added to my number, then maybe we're not at 1% in total burden. You know, I just want to make sure it's all, that you're aware of all the different things. So, that would maybe push us up to 2% to 3%, if that was construed as being apples to apples. Of the surveyed, local governments, majority use the gross receipts method. Alpharetta, Forsyth, and Coming are the exceptions. Five of those use gross receipts and employee fee methods. Milton uses a gross receipts or employee fee. And from what I can tell, it looks exactly like ours used to, I think. And I should have wrote the date down, but I think it was prior to 2000. I got here in '07, so I think it was prior to that, that ours used to have an "or." And obviously, you're going to pay the lesser of, and a lot of times, that turned out to be the number of employees. So, we've struck that in like six, five or six, it was struck, and it's just number of employees. So, but Milton has the same. If you look at that schedule on there, it's pretty much the same as what ours was. So, our $7 per employee for 50 and above is lower than John's Creek at 13, Sandy Springs at 13, Roswell at 12. All three of those use a gross receipts and employee fee methods. So, I think that pretty much summarizes what, tries, you know, what's on this page as far as some of the highlights on how we survey and stack up. The last thing, point here was just a simple, was just one example, just to give an idea of the magnitude of numbers. We're at $7. If we did nothing but raise an admin fee for 25 bucks, and this is not an advocate, you know, advocation of that approach, just that that would, that $25 per all these 4,000 businesses, or roughly thereabouts, together with raising the fee, not anywhere until you get to 50th employee, instead of being 715, just to give you an idea, and there's 100 ways to do this, and removing the cap, that would generate about $500,000. That's all I got.
Thanks, sir. Questions from council? Councilman Hypes?
Director Harris, I'm focused on the summary, page 14. I think I understand from, you know, we've talked about this in the past, how this works. However, I want to make sure, one to four employees at $100. So, if you have one employee in your business, you pay 100?
Correct.
And if you have four, you pay the equivalent of $25 per employee.
Correct.
And so, you can, you can do the math all the way down. At five to 10, on the high end, it's $35, and on the low end, 10 employees into 7, 175, it's $1750. The next category is $27 down to 12, and then the next one is 17 down to nine. And yet, if you're over 50 employees, the bigger you are, the closer you get to $7 per employee. So, the way we have it currently structured, those that are the biggest pay the least per employee.
On a per employee.
Okay. And with respect to the $10,000 max, that, you know, as it continues to narrow down, the bigger you are, the closer you get to a $7 per employee, the bigger you get. And after you get to $10,000, you stop altogether, so that you actually can fall below $7 per employee. So, the small businesses are carrying a more per capita than the bigger businesses. If I'm reading this right, and I think we talked about this. But before I start having any false assumptions, I want to make real sure that I'm clear about how this is currently structured. So, that was, that was my question. I'd thank you for clarifying that.
Councilman Burnett?
Thank you. And can you tell me the five, the five businesses that are, you said hit that number today? Do you know what they, do you know who they are? I have to assume Verizon is one. I have to assume ADP is one.
ADP is up there. Fiserv is up there. I don't know if I can name all five. I don't think it was Jackson, but it's just over 2,000.
So—
2,000 employees, I think. I may have it.
We're not to a place where we're going to—
Yes, it is. Change Healthcare Technologies, Fiserv, Verizon, Lexus, Nexus, and ADP. ADP actually has two ADPs, but—
So, ADP was one?
Forgot I brought that in.
No, I was, to Councilmember Hypes's point, the guy or gal with two employees does not deserve to pay more per head than a company like Verizon with a market cap of $260 billion. I will always advocate for them. I think you're, I haven't seen this yet, unless it's what you showed us a while ago, but it looks a lot different. I wanted to ask you, is your preference, having sat in this city and others, you like the per-head model as opposed to gross receipts? Why or why not?
I don't think I necessarily have a preference, other than trying to do something administratively would be more of a burden under the gross receipts. It's more, you're flying blind when, it's really from your guys' perspective, and somewhat even the environment we're in right now, because you don't know the gross receipt impact, because I don't know the gross receipts of these companies. So, when you're trying to come up with that rate or what, based on profitability, what all these companies are categorized, but I won't know their receipts until after they get the bill, and then they self-bill themselves, and we know the gross receipts. So, that, you're flying a little blind. Obviously, other cities have models. They, this is what Roswell did, X. So, you probably have an idea that this kind of company would pay X amount of dollars. So, I don't necessarily have one. I just know that if, the timing and understanding the gross receipts is a little bit more, kind of an undertaking to do it. It's going to get a lot of probably big number changes across the board. And where an employee structure, even if you got rid of the base and just said, it's per employee, $15, $10, $13, you know, just per employee, regardless of categorized 1 through 4, is a simple method. You know, and you could probably have an idea to communicate that to your public in advance. You're going to probably go from here to here. That's all.
Mr. Mayor, are we saving the conversation for a minute from now?
Pardon?
Are we saving the conversation among council for the work session?
I mean, this is a workshop, so—
I'm asking you your preference. If you want to have a conversation and a dialogue now, or keep it to questions and answers? From top.
I don't have a preference.
I, if, if, we'll use Jackson Healthcare, because they're a huge private employer. If they wanted us to know, as a city, their gross receipts, they would be publicly traded. And I don't know that it is, it is my preference to not necessarily get in that business as a council. I don't care if everybody else does it. I just, I don't want, it's just my, that's how I feel. I'd rather keep it static, because a car on the road is a car on the road, whether a business makes $100 million or 25. So, thank you.
And it is a workshop, so, I mean, it's important for us to give feedback. I don't disagree with you, quite frankly. I think simple is easy, and if for no other reason. We want to get accurate numbers, and we want to have a system that we can apply across the board, and everybody knows what it's supposed to be and what it is. The complexity concerns me, especially when I see what's going on in other cities, where they've had challenges establishing those accurate ranges and determining that, and putting that on staff administratively. Anything we can do that is clear, simple, I think is preferable. But Councilman Binder had a question, and then Councilman Hypes.
I think one of the reasons for calling the workshop was just to organize thoughts and moving forward, because I think there was a, trying to get to a consensus idea, possibly short-term, if we want to do anything at all, or, but more importantly, you know, take a year and say, you know, what would be the best model? And what would work, and maybe have, give finance the opportunity to say, okay, taking a year's time, this is what we've come up with, and, you know, see what works, because we don't want to add burden in there. I guess one concern I have with just having employees only, so ones like, you know, restaurants, where it has a lot of employees, quite a bit, you know, compared to some of companies that maybe are outsourcing more of their work, whether it's virtual assistants, or having people doing their cold calling form, or outsourcing more of those. And that, it just wouldn't be reflective of, you know, some of the businesses, and similar to headcount, you know, who should be paying more per, you know, per person. But I, it's more important for me is maybe getting the group of the council to say, yes, let's move forward, and maybe have finance come up with some true models of what they would suggest, based on our recommendations. Because I'm not ready to answer now what model would work. I did, I did have one question, though, Tom, is, would we be able to give tax credits if those employees are Alpharetta residents? I don't know if we can do it through the occupational tax, but I know it's been—
I don't think—
That might be more of an attorney's question, Sam.
Short answer, that is no.
Okay. I like short answers.
And he could have billed us a lot, just for—
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Keep it short. And, no, the reason is, to the point of, we get, we double, we used to double in size every day, and I can't wait till, I was going back to that, pre-COVID. And so, we do, we do get a lot of stress on our infrastructure because of the great businesses that we have. So, that does play a part of it, but if they're hiring Alpharetta residents, then that's a good thing, too. So, I personally would just like, like finance to go back and take some time, maybe, you know, for the next business license cycle to say, okay, what works? know, for the next business license cycle to say, okay, what works? I will say that we're, we're under the market level, and I do think it needs a market level adjustment. And would love to hear from the professionals if we need a system adjustment. But I think everyone can see here that there needs to be a market level adjustment, whether we do that now or wait a little bit till smoother times. I defer to the opinion, the opinion of the majority of council.
Thanks, sir. Councilman Hypes?
Director Harris, do you remember the last time we made any substantive changes to these rates and structure? How long this has been in place?
At least 13 years, probably 14 years.
Like Councilman Binder, I also think that there's a market rate adjustment that's needed. My take on this is this needs to be adjusted. And if it's been 13 years, you know, the city has grown significantly since then. Infrastructure needs have grown exponentially across the board. And so we need to update this to reflect the city that we are, the city that actually the reason why businesses are here is because of the things that the city provides for those businesses. And I think there needs to be a marketplace adjustment, and I think this thing needs to be applied more equitably. And I'm bothered by its current structure that it's regressive rather than progressive. I'm just not a fan of those with the least pay the most per person because it's, it's a fortune to a small business and it's, it's, it's nothing to an extremely large business, especially when they're paying less per person. They can, everybody can build it into their own profit margins, but if you're paying $100 occupational tax, you got to build a lot more into whatever widgets you're selling. So, and in terms of equitable, too, I just think that $10,000 max is, is, is the height of being inequitable and regressive. So now, Councilman Binder would like recommendations and, if I understand correctly, and while I'm certainly eager for recommendations, I think as a policy decision, as a council, we've got to come down as a policy decision about how we want to apply this for our city. And without making any decisions about where I'm coming down on this, I'm certainly leaning toward keeping the same system in effect, but adjusted for market and equitable, to make it equitable for everybody. I'm like Councilman Burnett, the gross receipts seems fraught with uncertainty at a time when we could benefit from budget certainty in all different aspects, in my opinion.
Councilman Burnett? And then Councilman Merkel?
To take off something that, a question from Councilman Hypes. You know, a dollar that was a dollar in 2007 is not a dollar in 2020. And that is a, it's a fundamental fact. It's not worth as much. Question for you two. If we made a change, is there also, can we legally, as a council, tie that structure of whatever that dollar figure is that we put a date in the same? Can we tie it to CPI so that it, it updates every year so that if a council wanted to change it subsequently, they would have to do so as a fundamental way, change of doing business? I think that's a very intelligent idea to get us the hell out of that business. Whatever recommendations you guys come back with, I think that needs to be a part of it because to hit Councilman Hypes's point, we don't have to, we shouldn't come back in 2022 and say, we need to change it to 16. CPI can keep up with all that, and inflation is candidly zero. So the day that that moved in a positive direction, I, I think that we don't, I don't want to go back and have to force somebody to reexamine this in 15 years because they can outright change it, but I would like to craft a good policy. Thank you.
Just to clarify, are you saying that if we make a change, we should make it an automatic adjustment each year based on the CPI?
That's inferred. Yes, sir.
Sam, is that possible?
I don't know what, that it would not be.
Okay.
Possible. You know, we'll certainly check into that, but to me, I don't know of a reason right now why that wouldn't be.
That's fine. I just, to my knowledge, we hadn't done anything that was automatic like that, so I just wanted to make sure it was legal if we were considering it.
That could be rounded to the nearest dollars and nobody's checks is going to be rationed to the dollar.
Correct.
I would assume it could be crafted that way.
It would definitely make a difference in terms of rounding.
Councilman Merkel?
Yes, to a lot of this. I appreciate Councilman Binder bringing it up. 13 years is a long time. So yeah, I agree that this needs to be looked at, come up with a better plan. I think we've just kind of pushed out some good ideas here tonight. I would also like to stay away from gross revenues. There's, there's a lot of manipulation that can happen with that. I do think that a more equitable system would be warranted if you wanted to put it to flat, it's $15 a person. That sounds high to me compared to where we are now, but we'll have to go through these and look at it. I like the idea of tying it to an increase, maybe not on an annual basis, but maybe adjusted every four years, something like that. Keep kicking that idea around. That way, they're not getting an increase every year, even if it's smaller. I mean, I insure businesses, so I work with people that watch the numbers every single year. And they, you know, if there's a 3% increase, I'm getting a phone call. So maybe there's a way to do that in incremental years, certain years down the road. But certainly worthy discussion. And then my last part was, back to Councilman Binder's point, maybe it's a year out. I would like to think so for right now. I mean, I'm in a very big, large, empty office building. I don't know if that is coming back. They've figured out how to put 270-some people at home to work. Why would they need to continue to? So we're going to struggle to keep this number that you're looking at on the screen now as it is. And then the creativity is going to change as far as workforce. And then how do you count those? So kind of need to watch it all kind of shake out and see where it's going to wind up through this, get through the election, the COVID, and continue the conversation. So, thank you.
Councilwoman Richard?
Yeah, I would agree. I think that this has been really instructive as far as a deep dive into what we've been doing and what other cities are doing. And I would certainly be interested in looking at a restructure so that we're more within a market rate environment with our surrounding cities. And I think fiscal 21 is really where we want to be looking at this. I'm not interested in making any adjustments right now for this year.
Okay, thank you. And I'll just say, and Councilman Binder touched on it, and several of you did, too. I think had we had this discussion 12 months ago, my position would have been very different than now because I do think that over time, we need to adjust to market realities, to our competitors around us within metro Atlanta and across the country. But right now, I'm sensitive to the fact that we have to give every reason we can possibly give to get people back into our office parks because those are what are going to sustain the people. And I want us to be cautious as we talk about equity. I certainly take your points about having to pay $25 per employee as opposed to $7. But let's not lose sight of the fact that those one to four employee companies in this city depend on those 2,000 employee companies. Because those one to four employees, those six to 10 in a restaurant are the ones that are really struggling right now because the 2,000 aren't there. And so we have to be very cautious that while we're trying to achieve better equity, that we're not losing sight of the fact that 12 months ago, this city imported 67,000 people a day, and we're not doing that now. And we're in a very competitive, changing environment through no fault of these companies, through no fault of our own. So as we continue these discussions, the timing's important, but let's also lose, and maybe it's a strategic decision that we make. But I mean, that 60% of corporately-owned commercial properties, it takes a lot of four-employee companies to fill a 200,000-square-foot building. And we've got a lot of those around. So we just need to be looking holistically. And hopefully, as the dust settles and we recover over the next few months, we'll have more insight on it. But I do think this is a great conversation to be having. This is good information for us to digest. And I look forward to us having something that works out eventually. Councilman Binder, I think you had just something else?
No, I think that was it. I just, I appreciate everybody taking the time and speaking up. I think we work better as a group of seven. So I just, that's why I wanted the workshop setting. And I know, I know there's sensitive topics, but I know everyone's trying to do what's right. And us all working together, if we can get something going, I think taking time to do it right rather than rushing to do something now is a good, good approach, so.
Thank you very much. Any other questions from council? Thank you, Director Harris. I appreciate the time your staff and yourself put into this. We typically don't always take comments during a workshop, but if there's anyone here that would like to come speak on this item, now's your opportunity to do so. Seeing none, we'll close public comment. So that will wrap up the workshop for this evening. And public comment, we do still offer an opportunity if there's anyone here that hasn't had a chance to voice their concerns or share some good news. Now's your opportunity to come forward and do so. And we'll close public comment. Do we have any reports this evening? Yes, we look forward to having Mayor Pro Tim Mitchell back with us at our next meeting. I'll just say, it's been a very strange election cycle. And based on the latest statistics I've heard, close to 50% of the registered voters in the state of Georgia has already voted. So hopefully, there won't be too long a lines tomorrow. But if you have not voted, please do so. This is a critical election, and there's going to be a lot of people that are going to be disappointed one way or the other. And whether that's the local races or the state races, the national races. But elections have consequences, and it's important to all of us. And so for those of you that haven't exercised your vote, I have not yet. I'll be in line tomorrow. It is important to exercise that right. Don't take it for granted. Show up tomorrow and vote, and then we'll all have a beer tomorrow and wait with anticipation to see what the results are. But God bless all the candidates from every party and everybody who put themselves and their family through a campaign. Because, man, when I see what's going on, I'm glad I'm not running in this environment. But God bless you all, and we'll see y'all next time. Absolutely.